Good evening, welcome to the April 28th meeting of the Northampton Planning Board. We start each of these meetings with an opportunity for the public to make a comment on something not on the agenda, so it's just an opportunity to bring things to our attention. Anybody got anything they want to bring up tonight? Alrighty. I'd like to open the agenda item, scheduled for 7 o'clock, plan for construction of 3,850 square feet auto mechanics building at 1812 Auto located at 130 Spring Street Florence, MAP ID 228-B-8. Is there a presentation or words? Yeah.
Hi, my name is Tom Pease, I live at 130 Spring Street in Florence, and that is the address also of the shop that I started back in 1934, the Autobody, now it's turned into Autobody and Mechanical Shop.
It's a long time.
This is the overlay that I drew up. This is our house, Spring Street, recreational fields right across that are just, were just completed, the Autobody shop that we got the permit for back in 1984, and our proposal is this mechanical shop here, it's actually 55 by 70, whatever the 38 feet came out to be. We set it so that's 35 feet away from our neighbor, which is residential, 40 and 60 feet back from Spring Street. Our proposal, of course, is to build a building, and we're requesting a curb cut right in front of the building here. There's a crosswalk that they just put in for the recreational fields, and we're going to be at least 60, 65 feet away from that crosswalk. There is another crosswalk here right in front of my house that they just put in also for the recreational fields. With that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Looking at the picture, where is your existing driveway in relation to the crosswalk? Is it, is it right on top of it?
See, our house is right here. The crosswalk is right in front of the house.
So that existing, yeah, so that existing drive is, staff comments were to reduce that from 30 feet, that's to 24.
It's about 38, it looks like.
38.
I measured it at 36, but I could have been off with a curve.
I was using this, so your measurement's probably more accurate.
Yeah.
But the thought was to reduce that to 24 and pull it away from the crosswalk?
Right, so the maximum allowed curb cut width is 24 feet for commercial use. DPW also had that comment about the width of that curb cut and making it narrower there and pulling it away from that crosswalk. Obviously, we make it safer, and it also pulls it further away from that intersection with Meadow Street.
But that's only if you put the other curb cut in?
Right.
Well, the whole project is, you're looking at the site plan for the whole site, so you could take the opportu, there's a special, there's site plan approval for the second curb cut plus site plan approval for the building itself, so all of that is in play. I think if you did find that the second curb cut would improve safety for circulation of vehicles coming and going from the site for the different sides of the businesses, I would certainly recommend that the existing curb cut be narrowed, I'd probably recommend it under any either scenario.
It, you could narrow the curb cut without having the second curb cut? You could narrow the first, okay. That curb cuts, sorry.
We're requesting that second curb cut for the mechanical building, also to reduce anywhere from 30 to 40 percent of the cars coming into that original curb cut for state inspections. All of state inspections will be moved to the mechanical building, which is the second curb cut, so it eliminates a lot of cars going in and out of the driveway all day long, Saturdays, we even haven't come in Sundays for stickers, so we move it direct a lot away from that crosswalk. Which we see, no, we see it all day long, we, you know, we're concerned too, I mean, that's why, that's why we're doing this.
Carolyn, that driveway would not be legal in relation to its proximity to the intersection the way it is right now, would it? We wouldn't, we wouldn't allow that driveway to go in there, just offsetting?
I believe it, because Meadow Street was modified, I believe it meets the 50-foot offset, I'm just going to do a quick measurement here.
See, they changed, it used to, Meadow Street used to go straight across.
Yeah, yeah.
There was like a little island here.
Yeah, it probably, it just makes the 50-foot.
Okay, it doesn't hurt to reinforce that story.
That curb cut that's proposed is directly across from the houses that are there, so all those cars will then come and go immediately across from residential?
Yeah, just, it's the same as the car, the house that's across from us now, like I said, we're diverting some out of that, the first curb cut into the second one, to the mechanical shop.
So in other words, without the curb cut, the cars would just have to sneak through that little gap to get into the building?
Yep, and really get jammed up.
And how does the proposed curb cut driveway line up with the driveway across the street?
It's not directly across from it, no, it's only, we're approximately 55 feet from that crosswalk that was put in for the rec department, so it'd be to the east.
Okay.
Yep. It will not be directly across, I was out there, it's not directly across from somebody else's driveway.
Okay.
This, just the actual picture here just makes this with the bill, it just makes it look a little tighter than, so the building would sit pretty far back, like, as it looks, back of it will be even with the existing building?
Even with the existing building, yes.
So there will be, where are all those cars?
They're gone.
They're gone already.
They're gone, it's all vacant now.
Okay.
That was taken many, many years ago, when we were, I think, there were a lot of abandoned cars, because we do towing for the city, and they've since been cleaned up.
So people coming to the mechanical building will, people using the sec, the new curb cut will be going there, people, there's not, there won't be back and forth, okay?
No.
Well, I think it looks tighter because the shadow of that building is moving, so, yeah.
How late, I'm looking at the, the proposed curb cut, so you're, you're across the street from that other house, so do you have nighttime hours, so if people are leaving, will their headlights be going right in?
Yeah, the hours that were permitted, I think were on 7 to 7, or, yeah, we do 24-hour towing, but there's a fence there, and when they come in at night, they just, the fence, we're going to have an electric fence up there, you know, a gate that closes automatically. No, there won't be anybody going, leaving after, in fact, we cannot, we don't do any state inspections after 4:30, 5 o'clock, so that's going to shut it down.
And that's how you're permitted, so that can't change?
Right. Well, according to the state, we can do stickers 24/7 if we wanted to, but we, we choose to do them only up until 5 o'clock.
What kind of additional lighting is going to be at or around that building?
We're not, we're not, we'll maybe put a motion detector in the back of the building, but there'll be no lighting in the, in the front, maybe signage, that's all. We have some lighting now off the existing building that we light up when we're towing a car in, taking a car out, but that's the only time the lights are lit.
Carolyn, is there any reason, it sounds like the applicant right now, it won't be an issue, but in 20 years of, there's a transition, and there's new owners, and they want to have a 24-hour Autobody shop, and there's cars lined up to get out, and their headlights are shining across the street at the, at the neighbors across the street and driving them crazy, is there, is it permitted so it can't go past 7, do you know, or is that something that we could put as a condition?
I would say you would want to put that as a condition, because this is a new portion of the business and new curb cut, and based on the curb cut location, it seems it would be appropriate to think about that impact, and if it weren't a permit condition, then that's right, it's general industrial zone, so any other use that comes in that complies with the GI zone could have operate, there's nothing in the zoning that says you can only operate from X hours to X hours.
Yep.
The issue with the headlights, you can't see it with the overview, but there's a seven-foot fence all the way around, you cannot see through the fence, because we put up a chain link fence and inserted the tony pine tree stuff, you know, that looks like pine needles, so it's pretty tough to see through it.
I'm just thinking, when people leave, when the gate opens, people are leaving, and they're sitting there waiting for traffic, and their lights are right in the living room across the street, though, I mean, you could always use the other.
We could always, yeah, we could always scoot down the other end, the other alleyway. Typically, people, we try to get them picked up by, you know, 5:30 or 6 o'clock, you know, we started, ourselves, we open up the shop at 6:00 in the morning, so it makes, makes for a long day for us, too.
Right, yeah, I don't see it being an issue for you, I'm just thinking ahead.
Yeah, I think, I'd like to talk about the timeframe for that, you know, what we think is appropriate, but I think we are not at all thinking about your operation, but just the fact that we create the rules that stay with the building.
And it is residential across the street?
Yeah.
Carolyn, could you, I mean, along this issue, but also trying to not be as restrictive on the business, could you restrict the use of that particular curb cut, but leave the other one, I mean, could you, I don't know, could you do that, like restrict it, that one that's across from residential for certain hours, but leave the other one in case, you know, a business changes over, you know, just?
Well, I mean, Mr. Pease noted that he, that there would be an electric, electric-operated gate, so, you know, you could have a permit condition that says the gate, the driveway should be closed off for access after a certain hour, that driveway, so that effectively also blocks that use.
Well, and I know it's not directly across from the house that's on the right-hand end of the road, but for anybody turning out, going towards leads, that they're going to, the light's there, so I don't think, I feel like dealing with one resident differently than we deal with the other resident, just because they're in different locations.
Well, I just, because it's not directly across.
Right.
And it's the second curb cut that you're granting to, is what you said?
Right.
Much as it doesn't seem likely, one of the things that we always talk about are bike racks, so, I know you're a car dealer, you know, you're dealing in four wheels, but we, maybe your employees would want to come on a bike, or, you know, you are now in an area that's picking up more bike traffic because of the recreation fields, so I would anticipate that we would ask you to install a bike rack on a new building.
And people come in with their cars and take the bikes off, and then take off, so.
That's how I do it.
Happens all the time, we're well aware of that.
That's, that's how I do it.
Absolutely put that in, because I think that the bike path someday is going to be connected across the river.
Right.
So it's, we're going to get more bicycle activity, we do now, they're using that sidewalk, they're circling around the fields, so, yeah, all right, we're, we're absolutely open for that. Good idea.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Pease?
I guess just one thing, most of the time when we get a plan presented to us, there's some type of landscaping plan that goes with it, sometimes it's an opportunity to pretty up the side of the street a little bit, but we don't have that in front of us, I don't know if there's a landscaping plan that goes with this.
I think I put it on one of the overlays, I have, I think I counted up, 44 arborvitae that are going to be, I also have that green fence here alongside our residential neighbor.
Uh huh.
44 arborvitae that are starting at 3, 4 foot tall.
Along Spring Street?
Right along, right along our residential area. The front of it has that greenery, and then on the other side of the greenery, I've got nothing, I've got vines and shrubs growing outside of there between that and the sidewalk.
And what kind of shape is that sidewalk in?
A street view.
He has 45 arborvitae and three pine trees.
Yeah.
Praying trees here.
You're getting slit, Carolyn.
See, that's the green fence, there's the greenery in front of the fence. We try to keep it so people are going by, they don't see the car, and then once somebody sees a big truck in there.
So that fence is right on the sidewalk, right?
No, it's about five feet from the sidewalk.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, can you explain again, the arborvitae would go on the side?
On the westerly side, yep, the complete one.
Going up Spring Street.
And I think, I, where's the 45, 45 arborvitae.
And so that's already a fence, so you're actually shielding the fence from?
That way, I'm already shielding it, but I wanted to do something for the, for the neighbor also, put those in, and in fact, they're great, because we can direct sunlight almost all day long, so that's what they thrive on.
So, is that a condition? I mean, there, he's putting them in, which is great, but we can make that a condition?
Well, it's part of the plan.
Part of the site plan.
So, he put it, so, right, so it was on the application, so he has to build it according to the plan that was submitted, right.
And I, the DPW sign was, stormwater went off.
So they did make a comment, so these, these came in this afternoon, which is why I couldn't get them to you, comments about the water and sewer connections, and we had already discussed with the applicant the fact that that wasn't shown on the plan, and the water service to the proposed building shall be from a tee after the meter in the existing building, no new service connection and meter will be allowed. The plan shows a second curb cut for the property on Spring Street, typically two curb cuts are not allowed, the existing curb cut on Spring Street is greater than standard of maximum 24 feet. I think that's just sort of acknowledging that the board has the jurisdiction, you know, for under, for that second curb cut, and they don't. The plan does not show how roof or site drainage will be managed, drainage shall be managed on-site, no water shall flow onto the roadway, so I think that could be a condition. I think on the application, it's explained that there, it would sheet flow to the sides on the property, but just to make that clear, I think it would make sense to be.
Because I had water runoff here, on the front area here, running to the east, and then off the roof, running directly to the south, yeah, to the south, so they're, in fact, talking with some of the people that do the, do the curb cut or whatever, our roadway going in and out will be lower than the street, there will be nothing going out on the street.
Well, and what are the required setbacks for that industrial area? These look pretty, pretty ample.
Generous, yeah.
Right, actually, they're much, they're much less than that, 20 feet on the front, and I believe 15 on the side, except that it does about a residential district, so typically you have the buffer anyway that creates a greater setback.
Well, and the trees that you're talking about planting will be useful for that regard, too.
Right.
So I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, that I'm, I'm pleased that we've got a little extra area around the building that's going to help with controlling the water as well. Any other board questions?
Just one thing, back to the front landscaping, and the fence does provide that buffer, I think, for the neighbors, and I guess what happens if someone decides to take the green fence down sometime, sometime, I guess just to have something that, so there's a, some type of requirement for some type of maybe permanence of a barrier there.
Well, you can certainly make that a condition, too, that the fence as shown on the plan should remain, or be, should be maintained, as long as the Autobody use.
Yeah, I don't know that Bill's talking about the fence as much as the existing greenery should.
Yeah, well, yeah, some type of barrier, I think, whether it be a fence, or whether it be shrubbery, but I think the landscape of that street would change dramatically without that fence there, and to me, good planning would require some type of.
Would you require that on the inside of the fence, or the sidewalk side?
Sidewalk side.
Street side.
Sidewalk side, because that would change what, what I would put in there, because arborvitae need a lot of sunlight, and that does get shaded, so I have to put some other kind of a spruce or.
I think what we're thinking about is not you and your situation, but if those go away, the, the greenery that currently exists in front of that fence, we're just interested in trying to maintain that into the future.
Along, along Spring.
Along Spring Street.
So, to, and what about to the extent that if the trees, I'm not sure if, and I don't know, you know if those trees are in the right of way, or are they on your property?
I believe they're on our property.
The five feet between the sidewalks coming down, but it, it's dead, it's just hollowed
out, it's coming down, nothing grows on it or near it.
So, I don't know if, you know, if you want a condition about the fence should remain, and then if, and then the vegetation as presented, and if, has to be maintained, and if a tree, trees need to be replaced if they die or take down?
So you say the vegetation should be maintained along Spring Street?
You know that you have a property.
I saw, Louis saw it, and he didn't have any issues with it.
Couple of things I like about it, I'm, you know, we would be worried about outdoor lighting affecting the neighbors, we're already handling that.
Yep.
I'm kind of encouraged to tell you the truth, that you're coming in with your drawings, talking to us about doing a new business, I mean, that's, instead of, you didn't feel like you had to get a large design company to come in and make the presentation?
Well, it's a family business, my wife and my two boys, and one boy, we run in the Autobody shop, and the other one is doing mechanical, and that's very hard on those boys.
Keep them off.
Working down the middle of the winter outside.
Keep them off the street.
So, we need that, and, and actually, to be honest with you, the community's been very good to us, very, very good to us, and we want to stay.
So, we would typically now open the meeting up for any of the public that wants to comment, there's an R hat, and then there's the other part of the ownership, would you like to say anything?
I'm fine, Tom and I have gone over these plans so many times, and we.
I bet you have.
Everything into consideration, and we talked to the neighbors across the street, so they know what we're doing before we even came to you.
Yep, it's a big decision, I'm sure you have.
Yeah, and the greatest thing for us is the fact we have fields across the street that it's a big plaza, and it's great to see South, there's all 400 kids out there.
Well, let's just say we're still paying on the bond.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, state your name.
I'm Andrew Church, I own the abutting property. The only question I have about here, and this is when, if you all remember when you did, redid Meadow Street, the layout of the street, supposedly you found back in 18, whatever year it was, that there was a wider layout of the street, and I know that these lots, my lots, and, and this lot, they come into the street on an angle, actually a pretty sharp angle, and so when they went to the larger layout of the street of Spring Street, what that effectively did was move our lot down the street four feet, if you know what I mean, actually, when they did that, they made everybody's survey on the street incorrect.
Uh huh.
And so that's my only concern, because I know that I had some other surveying done, and where they had set pins prior to them putting, redoing Spring Street, and then it came out, and they, so now I have two pins, and they're four feet apart, so you end up losing four feet coming down the street. So, I, I just want to know about that, because I know my line moved down, so it seems like everybody else would move down, that's the only question I have.
Thank you, you've certainly got that on the public record. Any comment, Carolyn? Is it a DPW issue to chase down, is it?
Well, I'm not sure if it's an issue to, I mean, certainly if, if he wants to find out where the property or the layout lines are, I mean, there may be still the simple underlying ownership of the land, it's just the layout of the right-of-way maybe has changed, that's certainly a DPW question. For you all, you're considering this property and project as presented with the lot lines.
So, but, and I'll take that as an answer, but we've opened this up for public comment, we've learned something about the layout of the street, what advice can we give to how you get that resolved, or at least answered?
It's a DPW question, I don't think it affects this property in the way that, you know, basically the way it's shown, and that there's nothing to do with setbacks, there's, DPW has to approve the location of the curb cut, and again, the layout may be wider, meaning the right-of-way over the ownership of the land by the private abutting parcel owners, but that's not, you know, it, the, the research can be done potentially at DPW, so I'd recommend that.
Part of an answer. I think you see, it's not really our purview, but I think if, if you want to understand what the two different pins mean to the DPW, that they're the only ones that could probably answer, whether that's a right-of-way pin, or whether it's a, you know, I don't like you feeling like you lost four feet.
If you, if you, if you think about it, if you have something that's coming in on a 90-degree angle, okay, and you change the width of the roadway, it doesn't change the lot line at all, or the frontage or anything, but if it's coming in on a very steep angle, okay, and you widen it, what happens is, you push that pin down in it, it amounts to four feet on my property. Do you see what I'm saying?
So you're actually talking about the pin that is defining your sideline lot?
The frontage lot.
Frontage lot, okay.
Along with it, pretty much all the other lots on Spring.
Right, I'd, I'd say an organized letter to the DPW is your path of action, because more.
Yeah, it's, I'm going to get in the street.
Well, yeah, but.
I just wanted you to be aware of it, because I know, I just know it to be a fact.
Okay, thank you. Any comment about the building that's being proposed?
It's his property, I feel like he owns it, he should be able to do anything wrong to it.
All right, so I move we close public comment. Carla, second?
Second.
Mark, any other board discussion?
You know, this is a funny piece of property, because it juts way into neighborhood, and it was, been there for a long time before the zoning was what it currently is, I'm quite sure, but that curb cut bothers me. It, I think it's going to pull a lot more cars turning in front of those houses, I'm, it just seems like the wrong place, I mean, we can't help the fact that that's industrial, it is what it is, so I, you know, there's nothing we can do about that, but I'm, I'm not real happy about that curb cut.
I know, would tend to agree that the fact that the cars pulling in up there more often, especially that most of the traffic is generated by those inspections, and less traffic in the existing curb cut would offset those concerns, or might even create a safer environment, I mean, that's how I see it, but.
I think that the existing driveway is just in a tough spot, and it's always been a tough spot, so if we shrink that down a little bit, and the traffic's going to be reduced from that spot anyway, then, then I'm okay with the second curb cut.
All right, so could I ask Carolyn to review the things that we've talked about and as conditions, and we could sort of, I'm going to look around and get a sort of nod, or if you have something you want to say about them out of time?
Okay, so the existing curb cut should be reduced to 24 feet, one, at least.
There'll be a minute, we'll put it on the permit.
At least one bike storage rack, all drainage shall be maintained on-site.
On-site, not just off the road, on-site altogether.
Right. Yep. The fence and vegetation along the Spring Street frontage shall be maintained, and vegetation replaced as necessary. And
Mark?
Hours of operation to be aware of.
Yeah, I would like not to restrict it to just his business hours. I mean, I think we, we, you know, his business hours are daylight, actually. So I mean, I don't want to extend it much, but I'm willing to entertain something other than seven to seven if you want to. I'm not sure, they're not seven to seven now, are they? They are?
Yeah, and seven o'clock at night in the winter, that's, that's dark.
Okay. Any more discussion about that?
Are we restricting it just for the second, for the new curb cut, or are we restricting it altogether?
I don't know that we have a reason
I was thinking about the second curb cut.
Yeah.
Right.
And then
Well, the nice thing about that flexibility is, there is another gate, so I mean, there, there is a way around that building to get to the larger entrance. I wouldn't want to
I just don't know if that's really necessary. I mean, I don't really see a whole lot of traffic going in and out of a second curb cut after seven o'clock. And I just think it's unnecessary, but
I don't think for them, I'd see it at all, but I'm, I'm thinking, you know, twenty years down the line, who knows? Who knows? And then you don't want
Yeah, but, I mean, still, it's kind of stretching it, I think, but stretching the what-ifs, I guess.
Yeah. I just think we have enough, just because of where it is, it's in an odd spot with, with house. If this was in a general industrial with other businesses around it, we wouldn't have this discussion. The only reason we are is because there are houses right across the street.
Right.
And so, and one thing we talked about is exterior lighting isn't an issue now, but do we want to make that so it's not an issue in the future, too? And maybe that, in the past, we've said exterior lights turn off, you know, within an hour after close of business or something like that, so it's not, we don't get really a time, it's just
Or we could stipulate the what's, I mean, you know, we've got a zero lot line spill for light in the
But that's zoning anyway, so you don't
Right, so you have to do that anyway.
Yeah.
I don't know what you think about that, if that's even needed.
Any other opinions on that? My reaction is, we're talking about things that are not bothersome to you, and they give us some peace of mind in the future.
The only comment I can make about the lighting late at night is only when the tow truck comes in, and the light comes on, he unloads, and you leave, and the light goes off. It's not, we don't, I don't want it on at night, I, I live there, so.
But that could happen, as you say, on and off all night long, just, you're, you're running that towing business at night.
We get too many calls, but, yeah, I understand.
So I would rather not restrict that, but I'm not sure how to word it in such a way that we get what we want, which is some, some control over what other businesses come in in decades coming. I, I do think we're in a residential area, I mean, he's, it's your home, I'm happy to say it's your home, but and that's why I think the, the relationship will be well-handled as far as harassment of the neighbors with light and noise and traffic.
I mean, would we just do like we do in other businesses, where you say the lights are, lights are off? So if somebody moves in and they, they want to keep, for safety or security, they want to keep their parking lot lights on all night? And they, they, they say it's all for security, but the neighbor's across the street, drives him nuts. So maybe just say the lights are off, you know, an hour after closing.
An hour after closing business? Can I get a nod on whether we agree with that?
Right.
No.
Have a comment?
No, it's, it's not, it's really at this point debatable among us, not you, I'm sorry.
Well, Carolyn, the dark sky, I mean, what are the requirements? I mean, is it zero spill?
Yeah.
Lot line, so
Right, I mean, it's
That should take care of, I would think the dark sky could take care of this.
But I think the, the other issue is, are you, what, at what level is the majority of the board concerned about lighting? I mean, it's, it's a business district, site lights are allowed, the, the zoning determines what level of lights are allowed. So the next business that comes in may decide to install new lights that comply with the ordinance. We don't have a curfew, but it is a business district. But it sounded like you were starting down a vein of being concerned about headlights and use of that driveway as opposed to the site lighting? So, I don't think you should use the site lighting as a proxy for the concern about the driveway headlights, but
Me, actually, except for I think of, you know, the Atwood Drive Medical Complex, which, there's not a house within a mile of that, but we have those lights turn off within an hour of business, or ten o'clock at night, or whatever the you know, so to me, I, I'm, I'm thinking about this just like, it's another business, not because there's houses across the street, but because we have an opportunity to regulate it.
And I guess, I'm not sure, maybe, it doesn't sound like there's site lights, but there's a building light, a motion sensor light on the building. So to, so without, so then new site lights would have to be put on that would, that would then be restricted by a condition is what you're suggesting in the future.
Permanent lighting, I mean, a night light, that's, that's security, and that's on and then off, that's I don't know, if I, that's how, I don't know how other people feel, but I'm, I'm thinking this, we should treat this as any other business. So the lights aren't on, with dark skies, we don't want the lights on all night, just like we don't want it on any other business.
I would agree with that. I mean, there's no reason to have lights on all night long when this, it is in a residential neighborhood.
So an hour after business is what you're suggesting, so site lighting, and that, that would, that addresses that issue, but maybe there's still an issue about the driveway.
All right, I'd just like to weigh in on the lighting issue. We have been doing that, and I think if we're going to continue to do that, this is a situation where I don't even feel like it's an onerous, you know, request as a condition, so it, it seems consistent with what we've been doing in the past, and we should feel that, good about that. So, now on to the topic about the driveway and the use of that driveway after, after dark.
I don't have a concern with it.
I think it was brought up, and the applicant was receptive to it to stop use of that secondary curb cut after seven o'clock.
I think that should be part of it.
Would that make you feel better about having a second curb cut?
Not much, but
Okay. So, do you want to vote on the condition separately, or do you want to just agree that we have a set of conditions that we've, we think makes sense for this?
Agree.
Yeah.
Not around anybody who wants it separate should say so now? Okay. Could I entertain a motion? Mark?
I make a motion to approve the site plan for construction for three thousand eight hundred and fifty square foot auto mechanics building at eight twelve, eighteen twelve auto, at one thirty Spring Street Florence MAP ID twenty-two B dash eight, with the following conditions, reducing the existing curb cut to twenty-four feet, addition of a bike rack, maintain storm runoff and drainage on-site, maintain the existing fence and vegetation along Spring Street. Hours of operation for the second curb cut, or closed the second how do I say it?
Restrict use of
Restrict use of second curb cut after seven o'clock, seven P M., and site lighting should be turned off within an hour of closing.
Second, I, John?
Good job.
For the notes, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you.
Yep, good luck.
Carolyn has some things that she would like for us to consider tonight?
Um, so actually, I think it's just, so we, there's one A and R, this is the Christian Science Church on Center and Masonic Street. Oops, turn it over. Want to carve off the reading room, which runs Masonic Street, and sell that, separate parcel? And maintain the main part of the church building and the rest of the site.
Can I see that?
Yeah. So, so Masonic Street here, Center Street, police station over here, the old fire station.
It does seem like an offensive one.
It does.
So what are they doing?
They're carving this off, reading room.
That's a, that's a separate
Building.
Building, it's a separate
It is connected by this little breezeway.
Oh, okay.
But they're going to demolish that in the next year.
I see, okay.
But the parking doesn't go with it, just the
There is a row of parking that will go with it. We don't have a minimum parking requirement in central business. But and we don't have minimum lot size or minimum frontage, so there's, there are no requirements for other permitting to, to create the layout with the parking configuration that way.
So move.
Thank you.
All in favor? You're so sure that we're going to do that, I've already seen it advertised.
I've seen, it's, there's a
Oh, really?
Yeah, I have, too. Eight seventy-five, I think.
Okay, and then, this, I don't need a vote on, I just need signatures, and I only had them put on, I didn't know exactly who was going to be coming, so I was trying to make an educated guess. But I needed a signature for a lot release for the last two lots that were under covenant at the ridge. You all may know that the ridge, the street was accepted by the city within the last couple of months. But a year ago, the board signed off on closing out the subdivision, releasing all the covenants and the financial guarantee. But they never recorded the release of the lots, so now, the bank that owns all the lots wants to make, just clean up the last bit of that, so
Development Way Out?
Right.
Those are city streets?
The ridge is the city street now.
That will be plowed.
Yes.
Way out, where?
So
About as far west than
Sixty-six.
The town, yeah, it's, it must be, like, it's right on the town line, yeah, before you get
Yeah. So if you could
That's why we didn't kill it, John.
Just sign
I know, it's just like
Sign your name, and if you don't have a slot, just sign below it.
Sign somebody else's name, it does have a slot.
And that's it.
Move adjourned.
Nice.
John.
Do I hear a second? Dan, on top of it, all in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
But Dan, you came in a little bit